The hour of seven o'clock having arrived, we will call the Hastings Planning Commission meeting to order. This is the January eighth, two thousand and eighteen Hastings Planning Commission. This is a regular meeting. So, first item on our agenda today is the oath of office for those of us starting a new term and two new commissioners. I'll come down to the front and lead the members through that. I need to do it.
So if you've got an oath of office in front of you, why not stand up and hold up your right hand? I solemnly affirm that I will support the Constitution.
Aye, Jeff Deaver. Do solemnly affirm that I will support the Constitution.
Of the United States of America, the Constitution of the state of Minnesota.
Of the United States of America, the Constitution of the state of Minnesota.
And the ordinances of the city of Hastings.
And the ordinances of the city of Hastings.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties of planning commissioner.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties of planning commissioner.
Of the city of Hastings, counties of Dakota and Washington.
Of the city of Hastings, counties of Dakota and Washington.
And the state of Minnesota according to the best of my ability and understanding.
All right. Thank you commissioners and congratulations. Second item on our agenda, with it being a new year, we have to officially elect our planning commission chair and vice chair. The floor is open for nominations.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to nominate Jeff Deaver for the commissioner, or for the chair, I'm sorry.
Thank you. Are there any other nominations for chair? If not, we'll go ahead and take the vote. All those in favor of...
We just need a second on that motion.
I'll second that.
Okay, then we're good to go? Oh, thank you very much. And we need a vice chair.
And actually, we should, I think we need to vote on that before going forward.
Oh, we do?
Yep, correct.
Oh, I get it.
We just had missed the second.
Point of order, we missed the second. Awesome, thank you. So, again, all those in favor of Commissioner Deaver continuing to be the chairman, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? All right, now we're moving on to vice chair.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to nominate Commissioner Alpo for vice chair.
Commissioner Wallace nominates Commissioner Alpo. Are there any other nominations? Seeing, do I have a second?
Second.
Commissioner Johnson. All those in favor of Commissioner Alpo being our vice chair, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Uh, oh, thank you. Next item on the agenda, approval of the minutes from the November twenty-seventh meeting. Are there any additions or corrections to the minutes as they're presented there in your packets? Seeing none, I would accept a motion to approve.
Motion to approve.
Have a second?
Second that.
All right, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Minutes are approved. Next item on the agenda, type-two home occupation permit, two thousand and seventeen dash fifty-one, staff report by Justin Fortney.
Well, thank you very much. I'm gonna begin by providing a little background information on our home occupation ordinance. The zoning ordinance can allow for operation of home-based business called a home occupation, so long as it doesn't negatively affect the residential character, health, safety, or welfare of the neighborhood. There's two types of home occupations allowed by ordinance, type-one and a type-two. A type-one is generally an office-type business in a home that doesn't have many or any visitors or employees. And a type-two home occupation must be reviewed by the planning commission and approved by the city council. And type-two occupations would be home-based businesses that would either use a garage as part of the business, have more than one customer visiting at a time, or if they are in, have, there are persons engaged in the home occupation that are not members of the family residing on the premises. The subject business employs drivers who are not family members residing at the home and were required by staff to apply for a type-two home occupation license. This is a list of some of the last home occupations that were approved in the last several years. Locksmith, haunted tea parties, photography, accounting and financial services, lawn decor, lean services, and tent rentals. Home occupation guideline, or ordinance has some regulations that would apply to any type of home occupation that must be followed. Here's a list of those. No outdoor display of merchandise or materials. It must be conducted indoors and clearly secondary to residential use of the home. May not jeopardize the health, safety of the residence. Only products made on the premises may be sold from the premises. And deliveries are limited between eight AM and six PM. They also may not negatively affect the residential character, health, safety, or general welfare of the surrounding neighborhood. No offensive noise, vibration, smoke, dust, odors, heat, or glare. Only one vehicle and one trailer specifically used for a home occupation are permitted to be parked at the home and must be parked off-street. No traffic shall be generated by the home occupation in greater volumes than would normally be expected in a residential neighborhood. Any need for parking generated by the home occupation shall be met off of the street in accordance with parking regulations of the city code. And no more parking and traffic than normally expected between eight PM and seven AM. This is a site location map showing the areas in the south side of the city on the Riverwood subdivision, Village Trail and Sherman Way. The address is eleven sixty-five Sherman Way. This is an aerial picture of the property address. The business appears to operate by having several cars at the home that are utilized for the business. These include three minivans and cars in the driveway and a fifteen-passenger van that's sometimes present on the driveway in the street. Drivers come to the home at different times between eight AM and three AM on weekdays and eight AM and four AM on Friday and Saturdays. Drivers park their cars in the street and take a business vehicle and return it at the end of their shift. There may also be drivers that use their personal vehicles. I'm not sure if that's current, but I know that in the past was also done. These are some pictures that staff has taken. This one is in the early fall, showing the fifteen-passenger van. This is this weekend, the business vehicles in the driveway. And this is a picture showing one of the vehicles in the, in the home. The city's been receiving nuisance complaints about Smart Ride taxi service operations at a few different residential addresses since two thousand and eleven. The business has changed hands a few times, we believe. Over the past year, the city's received ten complaints from five different addresses regarding the current business, which include multiple business cars parked at the home and on the street. Employees come and park on the street and take business car for the day. Business and personal cars parked up and down the street all year long, every day. Vehicles not being moved during snow and causing buildup of snow on the streets and in front of the community mailbox because plows can't plow. A large fifteen-passenger van being parked on the street and not moving for days. Code enforcement asking the police department to enforce the twenty-four-hour on-street parking ordinance. When police department arrived, they witnessed the applicant verbally abusing a neighbor because he thought he was responsible for calling the police. Car doors slamming in the middle of the night and waking up the neighbors. And drivers arguing with each other outside the property in the middle of the night and waking up the neighbors. Staff recommends denial of this application. Notice was sent to neighbors within three hundred and fifty feet of the subject property as required by the ordinance. Staff came to the conclusion to recommend denial based on the business operations violating half of the zoning codes' regulations pertaining to home occupations. And there's a six-year history of complaints related to the business model being operated in residential settings. And these complaints have increased over the past year since being operated at this location. With that, I can, staff can stand for any questions? I believe the applicant here is here, along with some neighbors too that may want to make comment.
So, I see a large audience tonight. This is unusual for the planning commission. We don't typically see very many faces out there. This is not a public hearing, just so you understand. However, I'm gonna be a little lenient tonight and allow a few people to talk, I think, because it seems like a good idea to allow some opinions to be expressed and allow the applicant, I'm not sure who you are, to maybe speak just to, to the business and, and what's been said here so far. So, we'll, we'll give this a few minutes, I think. Does anybody have anything they wanna step up to the podium and make a statement or anything?
I guess, from what Justin read, there's been complaints over six years. I've owned the business for about a year and a half. And I guess whatever complaints were made before that aren't valid in this particular circumstances because the business wasn't in the neighborhood that it's in now. I bought the fifteen-passenger van in the fall, and come winter, I found a place to park it. I rented a garage. The van is not at the residence except when I need it to haul an amount of people. I'll bring it the night before or the day of, and I'll park it there, use it, and take it back within a day or two. And as far as the vans in the driveway, it's my understanding that you can have up to three vehicles in the driveway. Two of the vehicles are Smart Ride vehicles. One is my personal vehicle, one's dedicated completely to Smart Ride. The other van I use for my personal use when it's not being used for Smart Ride. My drivers come, Fridays and Saturday nights, there's two drivers that come, and they take, each take a van. They park on the street. They're gone until four o'clock in the morning, they come back, they park their van, my van in my driveway, take their car, and leave. I have spoken to Mayor Hicks about this personally, and he has told me that I was totally in compliance by parking my vehicles in my driveway. I have a daughter that lives there. I have a daughter's boyfriend that lives there. They each have a vehicle. My wife has a vehicle that gets parked in the garage. So, I never have more than three vehicles parked in my driveway at any given time. I guess, if you guys have any more questions for me, I'd be glad to answer them. The, the service I perform is very viable for the city of Hastings. They've been around for eleven years. Like I said, I purchased it a year and a half ago. A lot of people depend on it. Not only during the day, but at, or not only at night, but during the day too. So, if you have any questions for me, please ask.
Well, we'll, as the conversation gets going here, we'll...
Okay, thank you.
Call you up if we need. Is there anyone else that would like to speak to this issue?
My name is Dan Dibble. I live at eleven sixty Sherman Way, which is across the street and one house to the right. My bedroom opens up right to where the vehicles are parked. And would it be possible, Justin, to go back to that list about the, what's required, that one right there? Whoop, that one right there.
Complaints?
Well, how about the one that, that one. "May not negatively affect the residential character, health, safety, or general welfare of the surrounding neighborhood." We constantly have cars parked on both sides of the street. I have pictures here of the first snowstorm we had this year where the snowplow comes through, he has to lift his wing, he goes around. I never saw my curb all last winter because cars were parked in the street in front of my house. More than welcome to look at the pictures, I can pass them around if you like. I'm also the resident that was verbally abused. I was out plowing my driveway, and... I did nothing to provoke Mr. Zenter, other than I was out there. I wasn't the one that called the police. I don't know who called the police at this point, whether it was, I guess it was Don. So, it negatively affects the residential character of the neighborhood. As far as no offensive noise, three of us neighbors at least were awakened one morning about four o'clock in the morning by people out hollering something about lights. So, it just doesn't make any sense that a business like this would be in a residential neighborhood. They constantly have stuff there. There's a safety, you know, there's a safety thing with vehicles, more vehicles on the And you got normally expected, parking and traffic normally expected between eight PM and seven PM. A lot of times, the vehicles are out there running at five-thirty in the morning, and they run until sometimes four o'clock in the morning. Thank you.
Thank you for your testimony.
Hello, my name's Craig Michael. I live at eleven fifty-seven Sherman Way, and I'm two doors down to the east from where Lee lives and runs his business. I've been in the neighborhood since quite a while, nineteen ninety-three, and I just, I have a lot of pride in my neighborhood, and we have some great neighbors, and I'd really think it's important that we focus on letting the neighborhood keep the quality of a neighborhood. And I wish the best for Lee and his business, but it's just really not a place to have a bunch of cars out there parked on the street, and we have people coming through our neighborhood that are there for the business. And normally, it's a low-traffic area because there's really no reason why you'd go through our, through our street rather than to visit somebody in our neighborhood or go to your home. So, I'm, I'm concerned about that with the traffic and then the noise in the evening. And I'm a couple doors down, so I'm not quite as privy to as much noise, but, and they don't park in front of my house, but I do not like to have a lot of cars on the street in that area. It's just, it's not, not a safe area if you have children. It's not the best area for kids to, to be because of the restriction of the view, and that's another concern of mine. I don't have young children anymore, but we do have some young families in our neighborhood. I don't really have anything against the business at all, but I just, I just don't think it's the right place to have it. I wish, hopefully, maybe you can find some other place where he could be successful and, or do a different business model where he doesn't have to have the cars in that neighborhood, in our neighborhood, on the streets. Thank you.
Thank you for your testimony. All right, commissioners.
Justin, has this business been operating the last year, year and a half without a permit then?
That's correct. We had originally gotten a few complaints when it started up, and I had contacted the applicant and talked to him about it. And he had said at that time that, I believe, they weren't employees that were coming to the house. They were just, you know, friends and people visiting. So, at the time, I, all I had to go off of was, was his word on that. And we just looked at it as a situation where he is operating a home occupation, type-one, that didn't have people coming to the house, and a separate matter of just having a lot of people visiting the house. Sometimes there are properties in town that do have a lot of, a lot of visitors, or a lot, actually, it's more related to a lot of people living at the house. A lot of, their kids are, you know, getting older and driving, and, and they have a problem with too many vehicles. As the complaints didn't stop, and we kept, kept our eye on the situation, we had seen multiple vehicles there that were flagged as Smart Ride vehicles, along with the application that the applicant turned in stating that they have multiple vehicles there that are for a Smart Ride, and, and discussions that, and his testimony here that, that they do come to the house and they switch vehicles.
Mr. Chairman, Mr. Wallace?
I kinda wanted to address the neighbors. I appreciate that you guys are frustrated by this, and this has been something that's ongoing for you. I feel, I'm sorry, that the function of ours is to, is to, of our commission is to determine whether we're operating within regulations within. So, it's not for us to say whether it's fair what you're having to go through, it's for us to say whether it's within the regulations. I just wanna make that clear as I move forward with some of the questions that I have. From that standpoint of us, whether or not this is a legitimately operated, legally operated, within our confines and within our regulations, I think is what we need to be asking as the commission. And I'm seeing that this is, there are some clear, clear violations, and I think that's what I need to, I, so my first question then is, code one-five-five dash zero-seven D-two-J states that only one vehicle or trailer specifically used. You just gave testimony that there's at least three that are on the property. Also, what this isn't asking about is the employees that park their vehicles and leave them there. Would they not then be considered part of the business as they are parking their vehicles? That's what I need to find clarification on. Justin, do you have a, do you have an answer to that? Do you know? I mean, can we speak to that?
Well, I mean, we've, yeah, I mean, we know he's got multiple vehicles there that are there from time to time that are related to the business. And then, the code says any vehicle that's going to the premises related to the business. So, it could be employee parking, it could be a customer visiting, for any reason, there's a vehicle at the site because of the business, it needs to be off-street.
Okay.
And a separate code only allows three vehicles to be on-site.
Three personally-owned vehicles or three business vehicles?
Three...
Or does it differentiate between?
It doesn't, it's an unrelated code.
Okay. Sir, I saw your hand go up. Did you, did you have a question for me, or?
Just so you know, my drivers are not employees, they're independent contractors.
Okay, so they're subcontracting through your business?
That's correct.
But it is still your business?
Are they?
They still subcontract to you, correct? So then, their vehicles and your vehicles are still associated with your solely-owned business, correct?
They don't use their vehicles for, for Smart Ride.
No, but they do leave their vehicles on your property to jump into your owned vehicles to do the job, which therefore, yes, okay, thank you.
I, I don't have any more questions right at this moment.
All right.
Chair.
Yes, commissioner?
I mean, speaking to what Justin said, every business has to have parking requirements for not only the people coming there, but the people that are doing business with them. Any commercially-owned business has to do that. So, I would say, in this case, you know, you would be looking at both the employee vehicles and the vehicles. I mean, it's pretty obvious here, I think. That's all.
Any other comments or questions from the other commissioners?
I have, I mean, I'm torn about this. I, we, you know, it's clearly, clearly that we need to be looking at the, basically, the letter of the law here. And it, it appears as though the vehicle count exceeds what, what is specified here. And it's unfortunate, I, I'm, you know, in many ways wanna endorse the business itself. It's a really viable, important thing that you're doing for the city of Hastings. We don't have much for public transportation around here, and I, and, and if you wanna read the paper anytime and look at the DUI list, I'm sure a lot of your people are, we're keeping those people off of that list, right? So I value what's happening here. The parking thing, I could, you know, I have a duplex across the street from me, and I'm sure it's in violation of the parking code. Three, four, I mean, there's lots of vehicles. They park on my side, they park all over the place. So I have a, you know, quite an understanding of that. As much of a nuisance it is, it, it's, it's something I put up with because I do, I guess. I mean, but, you know, again, if it's, it slides into this, because it's running a business, there are, there are a lot of rules. I also, you know, sort of am, am, empathetic about, you've been running this for a year and a half, and I, I, I think we've got a list of complaints here that may or may not be during that year and a half period, is that...
These ones are all from this subject property.
They're current?
That's correct.
Yeah, okay, okay. Yeah, well, there's a statement up above that this is, for some reason, this model hasn't worked in the city wherever it is, is what you're trying to say? Yeah, okay. I wish it did, and I wish that we could find a place where you had the kind of parking that you need, you know, you need, like I said, we had brought up, talking about parking spaces for the, the drivers themselves, for their private cars, and, and parking spaces for the, the company cars, as it were. It looks like it's a tough thing to run in the neighborhood. And I'm kinda going on and on about nothing, but I, I just wanna state that, that I wish this was a working model, but right now, it doesn't seem to be working. I think it's important, sort of function that, that you guys do for the city, and, and it, it hurts me to see it be stopped. But again, we're here to look at the, the legal ramifications of, of the code. So that being said, I'll stop talking. All right. Mr. Chair, I just have a couple comments too. I too understand the need for a business like that, and I commend you for running a business like that. I just truly believe that, you know, the number of violations here, it's not being run in the right location. We, we cannot run a business like this out of a neighborhood. It just doesn't make sense. It's not, it, it simply cannot sustain, you know, without negatively affecting the residential character, health, and safety. And I'm extremely concerned about that. Me, even if it was just a parking issue, you know, maybe we could deal with something like that, but, you know, when you have so many violations going on here, I'm just very concerned about it being in this type of location. I would be much more, you know, I would like it much better if this was in an area where, in a more of a commercial location, where cars could come and go, and it wouldn't impact users in there, or people... in a more of a commercial location where cars could come and go, and it wouldn't impact, uh, users in their, or people in their homes and, and children and things like that. I, I just don't think this is the right location for it.
Mr. Chair, Mr. Wallace.
Mr. Zentner had a comment. He had his hand raised earlier.
To reiterate, if, if you could bring up the violations again so I could look at them. Do you have violations?
I think he's got them on a list here.
Oh.
It's right there.
Yeah.
That's the regs.
Oh, I think he, he, you're talking about the, the slide that has the complaints on it?
Yeah.
Oh, the complaints?
Yeah.
Is that, I mean, are those the violations? Cause he said he had numerous violations. What, what are, what are the-
Well, th- this is a list of the complaints, which has some overlap with violations.
We have a list here.
Well, it's, it's very similar. This list here is home occupation regulations. It's, uh, two pages long, but I split it up. This first page, um, is regulations for home occupations that it didn't appear that you're violating. Uh, the second page, um, are regulations that it appears, uh, the current business is violating.
Is that a type, is that the type one regulation or type two?
This applies to both either.
Commissioner Harvey.
Could I just ask a, a real general question? Um, so he applied to be a type two home occupation, correct?
That's correct.
And if, if for some reason this is not approved, um, then he would not be able to have a type two home occupation. Can, could, would he still then be allowed to have one vehicle at the house running this business? I'm just curious as a matter of question.
Um, he could continue to operate as a type one operation, which would mean he couldn't have, um, people not associated with the business coming to the house. Um, if he wanted to operate as a type two, he's gonna have to reapply, um, after a period of six months.
Okay.
So should I, 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 you just suspended it for using my, using my, who would that business for six months?
At your location, yes.
So I can only have one work vehicle at my location?
That's correct.
Under a type one, under a type one home occupation.
No, it's, actually, it's for any, any.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Um, the difference between the type one and the type two in this instance would be, um, having people come to the house.
Correct. Oh, I thought that's what we were referring to. You were talking about a business vehicle.
Are we?
Were you talking about a business vehicle or the number of vehicles coming to the house?
I was talking about a business vehicle.
Oh, I'm sorry. That is one.
Okay, so I have a comment. So the one vehicle that we use for the business is our personal vehicle. And the other one, the, the big van, we have at a different location, the storage and the garage.
Right.
So, so the one vehicle that's our personal vehicle is also used by the driver on the weekends. So if those vehicles then could be parked in our driveway rather than the street. Cause it's really, cause it's really only one vehicle that's at our house that is a Smart Ride vehicle. The other one is our personal vehicle.
Can she still have three vehicles in the driveway if the type two is denied? Um, I think he made it, I think she, he made it pretty clear that you can't have employees coming unless it's a type two occupation. So the, the employees would not be able to come there to pick up vehicles if it was only a type one occupation. Uh, but I don't know about the storage of the, the other two vehicles if they're not. Cause those would then be business vehicles even if they don't have decals on them, would they? I mean, cause they're being used for the business. I, I think it's one vehicle for the business, correct?
Yeah, it says, the ordinance says one vehicle solely used for the business.
Solely used, okay. So then could they have two other vehicles in their driveway that they brought somewhere else for an employee to use on weekends?
Um, the most vehicles they can have in their driveway would be three.
Three total.
Correct.
Question.
I have one van that I use for, that is my personal van. I also drive for Smart Ride. No labels on it. I use magnets. Nothing on it that says Smart Ride. The other one does say Smart Ride on it. Got window decals on it. Those are the only two vehicles that I use for Smart Ride. I have three vehicles. My driveway most of the time I just, we have two other vans. And, and the passenger van is parked offsite.
All right.
So it almost sounds to me like it's the employees' cars that are the thing that needs to change in this area.
Those, the employees' cars are there on Friday, Saturday nights. And they want to pick up the vehicles. Um, during the day, I'm the driver, so there's a lot of vehicles there. Except for Mondays, I have a driver that works on Mondays during the day. Um, Friday, Saturday, one driver. Even though I have two drivers there are Friday, Saturday nights.
All right, so I need to, I need to stop the comments for, for now. I appreciate the feedback. Um, but we, we do need to go ahead and I think make a decision, and I, I think we have enough information to do that. Uh, I'll let you know that right this, this will go before the city council. This is a recommendation by the planning commission for action to be taken by the city council. Um, who makes the, the final decision as to whether or not this should or should not be, uh, issued. Uh, for my part, uh, as a co- a commissioner, um, you know, I, I appreciate you trying to find ways to, to fix it. I, I do think however there, I agree with some of the statements the other commissioners made about the idea that I think this is a valuable business, but the, are components of it, uh, that simply do not fit in a residential neighborhood. Uh, and for my part, the one that stands out the, the brightest is, um, conducted the hours of business, uh, to be conducted between, uh, eight P M. and, and seven A M. There isn't supposed to be anything that is abnormal. And, and obviously, right, you're running this business to three and four A M. on, on certain evenings. For me, that's the one that stands out, uh, amongst the, the few that are, are here in obvious violations, I think, of what's in the code. So, uh, for my part, I will be voting not to approve this, uh, home occupation permit. And, and so I guess to that end is, uh, a little abnormal for the chairman to-
I'll, I'll make a motion to deny this home occupation permit based on the overwhelming evidence that was put before us.
Is there a second?
One second.
Commissioner Alpo seconds. Uh, so we are voting to deny the home occupation permit, so an aye vote would be a, a vote to deny. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? All right, the motion is denied.
And this will be going to the city council next week on Tuesday, uh, the sixteenth at seven P M. in this location. Um, it's one day later because of the Martin Luther King Junior holiday.
All right.
Am I gonna get in trouble by, uh, operating till Tuesday?
No.
Where I'm at?
No, you won't.
All right.
All right, uh, is there any other business?
I had a couple of items. Um, it's been a while since we met. Uh, the last time we met, we discussed a couple of items. And since then, the city council has approved the comprehensive plan amendment and rezoning for that property the city owns at, uh, Pleasant and Highway fifty-five. And they also approved, uh, ordinance amendment for funeral homes and crematoriums in R two zoning district with a special use permit. Uh, the next city council meeting is Tuesday, the sixteenth. Um, and there's not any, uh, business pending for, uh, planning commission meetings coming up quite yet. And that's all I have.
All right. Uh, motion for adjournment?
Motion to adjourn.
All right. Have a second? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned.